Hello everyone, let's bow our heads in the name of silence and reflection, please. Thank you, and we'll officially call this regular monthly meeting to order and welcome all of you officially. And let's now turn our attention to the flag at my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone here that has never been to a town meeting before? So all of you know about the paperwork in the back. All right. Number four on the agenda is consideration of approving the agenda for the evening. Mr. Hewitt?
Mr. Mayor, item 11, discussion of possible action in the recommended financial reporting form from the audit committee. That, in an attempt to lean forward and have something for the board's consideration tonight, I have prepared that. Since the audit committee took that up today and deferred action on it, it's probably appropriate that that be removed from tonight's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, number nine C. I'd like to add, and 2019, 2020 auditor. As you see on the, you know, we had, there were some recommendations from the audit committee about the audit report of 1819 and a recommendation on the auditor, and, and we just didn't, I have approval of the 2018 audit report, and I just need to reflect the action upon that recommendation on the, so add, and 2019 dash 2020 auditor.
Anything else? I hope so. All right, is there a motion to approve the amended? All right, motion made, seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, it is unanimously approved as amended. Number five, the minutes, June 18. Special meeting and regular meeting, is there a motion to approve both those sets of minutes?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Salute.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve both sets of minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Those who say no, it's unanimously approved. Number six, public comments on agenda items. I believe we've been waiting with excitement for many minutes now for Ms. Dolly Mitchell.
I just got back from Iceland, I'm ready for this. My name is Dolly Mitchell, I'm at 132th parking. I attended the audit committee meeting this afternoon along with other people, and I was glad to see the number of people that did turn out for that, our meeting. I would like consideration, the considerations from the audit committee that are being discussed tonight, in my opinion, should include the town manager and the financial officer in what is being offered as ordinances tonight. No exceptions. During the meeting, I heard the auditor state that the chair of the audit committee, who is a commissioner, had contacted him two times during this audit process. There's no record of what was discussed, and it's my opinion that under no circumstances should this be done without two people present or in the communication chain and a record kept of the information exchange.
All right, thank you ma'am. By the way, if you cannot hear, if you raise your hand, we'll try to do a better job of speaking into the microphone. All right, Madam Clerk, does that satisfy that item on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Chief Dixon, please report.
Mr. Mayor? Can you get it for me? No, I think, in fact, I get to report. Good evening. The report this month, as you can see from the numbers, we're in the full swing of summer. Been busy, July, been interesting with this report for June. Numbers there, we answered 308 service calls. The incident reports, we actually only took four incident reports, so we had a very good month for that. I know there's been a lot of talk about some fire trucks and stuff from last week, or this weekend actually came up, and without spoiling the July report, we actually had a house last week, it was struck by lightning. Everything is good in there, as far as I know, no one was hurt. We did respond down there, no one was injured, there was obviously damage to the house. Just, there's structural damage, everything else is good. If you have any questions, I would be glad to try to answer them, please. Comments, concerns, all things.
All right. Questions from this, yes ma'am?
Jeremy, I was just wondering, I continue to see golf carts parking by a couple of the beach accesses on Ocean Boulevard West, particularly the 880 site. Are you guys warning, ticketing any of these? It's a congregation place, I swear.
I understand, we actually are ticketing, I don't have the exact numbers from that exact location. Last month, we issued 33 parking citations, I'm sure a number of them came from that area. We issued nine warning citations on top of that, so.
Okay, I don't know what it is about that particular one, but they just like the park there?
They do, we do see golf carts there a lot, especially, I don't know why, there's this particular orange one that I know has been. I believe it is a rental golf cart, that every time somebody rests it, they get a new citation, so. But anyway, yes ma'am, we are, we are looking at that area a long time.
Yeah, I see cars too.
Yes, that is correct.
How often do you patrol Ocean Boulevard? Because literally, I don't go there, where, you know, I live, you know where I live, right here.
Right, right.
So when I go down to visit my sisters, I literally can see two or three cars every time I go down there.
It's, our officers are constantly patrolling, but I mean, it's, it's hard for one officer, seven miles of beach, plus the side streets.
But you're, you're, you're pretty much constantly going up.
We, we are, back and forth, and so, and when we're seeing violations, and we're not en route to another car, or have other things going on, we are addressing those as well.
Yeah, yeah, warnings, you know, we, you know, we don't have to, we don't want to ticket everybody, but.
That's exactly right.
I'm a big fan of that, so they know that they need to, they're due to.
That's, that's great, and there definitely are time for warnings, the right choice, there are times when a citation is the right choice to, sorry. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Freer? Yeah, so we received a June meeting update from the Holden Beach, Inlet Beach Catcher Board, 2019. I just want to call out, I guess, in the third to last paragraph, the last line says, "The Corps has confirmed that the project will happen this winter to replace approximately 135 cubic yards of material from the bedwinder on the east end, and their taxes are expected to go off soon." There is an update to that, I think we all know that, but just want to make it public. It is, we were told originally that the crossing and the bedwinder were going to be combined. We passed to fund that. Now, because of the requirement from the Fish and Wildlife to have a biological assessment, they're separating that from the base contract to a optional contract. So, again, that might not happen, we hope, we've been working with David, I know David's been working with Cockburn for vigilance on that, we hope that will still happen, but it is separate. So there's 80,000 cubic yards in the, in the crossing, and then the, an additional 125, 145, or something like that. A much larger quantity of sand in the bedwinder that we really want to get put on the east end, so, just a, just an update. And I know this was, this was published before we went to the, the MOA meeting up in, up in Newburgh. Anyway, that's it.
I wonder what you expect to get an update, maybe David, on this, because, kind of a sensitive issue, as I keep saying every month to everybody, but you know, you get the 80,000 cubic yards of sand, and then we've got the bedwinder. And I thought the total was more closer to 200, 200 cubic yards.
88 plus 135, or 120?
Yeah, okay, all right. You know, the concern that I have is that now Fish Wild, Fish and Wildlife is involved in the process, and I think we need to keep our ear to the track here, so that something doesn't happen that has happened to us before, and we end up with sand going to another needed place, ma'am, but that's about all I want to say about that. But it's important that we stay on top of this. I think we need to talk about this every two weeks or every week, or, you know, that's how critical to me it is. Because all they're saying is it's going to go on the east end of the island. And we know that the east end of the island is where our biggest erosion factors are.
David, is there any update to that?
Yes, the Corps had sent their draft BA in, they received it back, and as of last week, they, Brandon Dooley has communicated to us that three to four weeks, Fish and Wildlife, they're trying to turn it quickly, today being the Corps, is trying to turn it quickly, and have received assurances from Fish and Wildlife that they may be able to issue that assessment within three to four weeks. I used the term in my update that they guardedly indicate favorable, favorable belief that the, that the biological opinion is going to enable dredging of the, of the widener. But they're on track to award the base contract in September, and then 60 days after that is the timeframe for the award of the option, so.
Thank you. That is, is it?
Yep.
Mr. Fletcher?
We invite Audit Partner Jay Sharp to, 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 for the presentation of the 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019 audit report by the Audit Partner.
Good evening, my name is Jay Sharp, I'm the Audit Partner in Charge of the June 30th, 2018 Audit for the Town. I believe most of the commissioners were at the Audit Committee meeting, so sorry to repeat of a lot of the information that was provided at that meeting, but there is some additional information, there's a packet in front of you, you can follow on the screen also. So we're going to get started. All right, status of the Audit for June 30th, 2018, field work has been completed. The financial statements have been prepared and are currently in draft format. The Audit has been submitted to the local government commission for their review. They came back with one requested change. That change has been made, but we have not resubmitted to the LGC yet, we're waiting for final approval to do so. We're waiting on final approval from the Town to issue the Audit. Sending the Audit to the LGC is not issuance, and until we receive final approval from the Town, we will not officially issue the Audit. Rules and objectives of the Audit. So, you know, we all just start looking at the numbers first, we do some planning procedures ahead of time in the first few days of our out in the field. That includes getting an understanding of key internal controls. That also includes doing a test of controls over certain aspects of the town's finances. Based on this, and we perform what we call a risk assessment, so it's a risk-based audit approach. We assess a certain level of risk to each part of the major financial reporting of the town, whether it be, for example, cash, receivables, fixed assets. And that assessment can change throughout the Audit, and it can change from year to year, depending on what's going on with controls, depending on our results or our test controls, and other factors. We perform the audit procedures to obtain sufficient evidence to render an opinion on the financial statements. That is, why you hire a CKA firm to conduct the Audit is to give an opinion on the financial statements. Without the opinion, without the opinion, the financial statements themselves would not mean much to outside. The opinion concentrates on whether the financial statements are free from material mistake. This is a reasonable assurance, not absolute. Sometimes the results of the financial audits with governments punch you up with what you call a single audit, which is a compliance audit. You do not have to have one of those for 2018, because the federal and state expenditures did not exceed the required level. So there was no single audit conducted in 2018, and this can change year to year, depending on the number of expenditures you have in regards to state and federal funding. So the results of this year's Audit. Scope and timing of Audit were off track.
Hey, can I, can I call a timeout here?
Yes, sir.
And this is purely administrative on my part, it has nothing to do with the Audit whatsoever.
True.
But, but we need to make an administrative change to the agenda to make sure that everyone in the audience and the Board is fully aware of the accuracy of what's being portrayed here. What Jay is presenting tonight is the Audit for the fiscal year ending 2018.
2017, 2018.
2017, 2018. The agenda on item nine, for, for, just, if you would strike through every reference in item nine A through C, 2019, and I believe that that will sufficiently describe what we're talking about. I want everyone to be perfectly clear, this is for the fiscal year ending 30th of 2018, okay? And likewise, in item 12, the amended Audit Contract for Fiscal Year 2018 dash 2019. 2019 needs to be strictly amended, so that it's, it's clear that it's for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Does, does everybody have that? Okay, I'm sorry, Jay.
No problem, no problem. So the results of the Audit for June 30th, 2018, scope and timing were off track for this Audit. It was detailed on the Audit Committee meeting, we ran into some difficulties. One, obviously, our hurricane Florence hit the week before, it was just to start field work, had to delay field work by two months, and then we had some issues with the receivables and payables, which are detailed in the material weakness, and we can talk about that toward the end of that presentation. But the opinion for the 2018, unmodified opinion, that's the best possible opinion you can receive on the financial statements. If there's any major issues with the financial statements themselves, or the town's finances, I'd be, in the first place, you'd see indication of that would be in the opinion report, but as I said, unmodified opinion. We did have one finding this year, a material weakness relates to the accrual process for the town's reporting. These resulted in material adjusting journal entries for 2018. As we noted in the meeting earlier today, we had $2.1 million worth of adjustments, adjusting journal entries to the trial balance that we received originally. That resulted in a material weakness finding for 2018. We require communications, so we're, there's a separate letter issued, it's just like, what you call a communications letter, it was standard format this year, highlights of that. No new significant accounting policy changes for 2018, that was detailed out in the notes to the financial statements. Are there any major changes to the accounting policies of the town, and we're required to report those? Obviously, there will be minor, you know, changes to policies year in and year out, but if there's any major ones that affect the notes, we're required to report those to you, and there were none this year. All the estimates we looked at appeared reasonable. We had notes disagreement with management. As I said, difficulties encountered, started out with the hurricane, and obviously the receivable and payable issue is detailed out, and the material weakness to the financial statements this year. So the next few pages are going to concentrate on the town's finances. And it's just, as a general information, graphs bring life to the numbers themselves. These are government financial statements, so they can be sometimes difficult to read. Due officer comparison to last year. So the first one's a general fund summary. This is your revenues, expenses for general funds, 2018 versus 2017. The blue represents your revenues, red represents expenses. Obviously, both years, your revenues outpaced the expenses in the general fund. Your revenues went up slightly in 2018, while your expenses went down, actually, in 2018 compared to 2017. Next is your governmental fund summary, so that's the general fund, plus the other funds, the B part, and a few other ones. This details out the revenues and expenses for the two years. So in 2018, you did show a profit for governmental funds overall, $6.3 million in revenues, while $5 million in expenses. You will notice in 2017, you did have substantial loss, that related to a major beach nourishment project, I believe, in 2017. Your revenues were $9 million, while your expenses that year were $20 million. And that resulted, a lot of that was the beach nourishment project, I believe, in 2017.
And Jay, just for everyone's edification, that expenses outstripping revenue, that's really debt?
Yes, that's correct, yes. I'm going to say, we did that 2017 Audit, but yeah, David was right, and a lot of that was paid for by debt. The next one concentrates on the fund balance. The red line is governmental, while the blue line is general. So you'll see over the last three years, both fund balances, and both overall governmental funds and general funds, have increased slightly, so, you know, not going down, going up. And that's despite, you know, the large beach nourishment project in 2017, like I said, debt funded that. And so you're overall going right, trending in the right direction, upwards, not downwards. Next pie chart focuses on the breakdown of fund balance. So fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2018 was comprised of three parts, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. Restricted has to do with, restricted by general statute, and restricted for beach nourishment. Assigned, whereas the fund balance was assigned by the town. The one that's key in on is the orange section, that is unassigned fund balance. So that's a portion of the fund balance that is reused by the town. One of the things we look at, is we compare that to your overall expenditures each year, and get a percentage. And basically, the LGC recommends 8%, you're well above that. If you look, your unassigned fund balance at the end of 2018 was $1.6 million. But your overall expenditures for that year was, for 2018, was just $5 million. And so it indicates you have a very healthy fund balance in place at the end of June 30th, 2018.
Okay, I need to make an interject with a correction here, Jay.
Sure.
On the restricted fund balance, which is the blue part of the pie chart there, you said that that was restricted to beach nourishment. That's not restricted to beach nourishment, that's a special revenue fund, that's occupancy tax, and it's a 3-2 split. A portion for, some for beach nourishment, and some also a portion for tourist-related purposes, which may include beach nourishment. But I know that it's a constant articulation and regurgitation on the B part law, that everybody speaks to that as the sand fund, that it's not the sand fund. There's a, there's special legislation that teases out the two different distinct pieces of that that's subject to the Board's decision every year, so I just want to make that statement.
The next graph is a calculation review, accuracy of resources within the general fund. So basically, what we're looking at here is the cash balances that you're in compared to the prior year expenditures. And basically, based on that, how long could the fund continue operating if it was to receive no more cash inflow? And so for 2018, that number is 310 days, last year was 253 days. This indicates that the town has a healthy cash balance at the end of the year. You generally see that anywhere from, you know, three to six months. You're well, you're almost a year in cash reserves at the end of 2018, so very healthy cash balance at the end of the year. The next one includes all the governing funds. The calculation for 2018 was 659 days compared to just 135 days last year. So once again, you're almost two years' worth of cash reserves in 2018, and you know, almost a few months in 2017. So once again, a healthy cash reserve is in all governing funds at the end of June 30th, 2018. Next couple graphs, look at, through the key revenue accounts. So the first one looks at property taxes, 2018 versus 2017. So property tax revenue went up slightly, it was $2.6 million in 2017, and it rose to $2.7 million in 2018. The property tax rate did not increase though. Next is other taxes and licenses, this includes such things as sales tax. In 2018 and 17, you see that's increased, $2.6 million in 2018, 2017 is $2.3 million. We've seen this in a lot of towns, this number increasing, the sales tax throughout the state has increased over the last couple of years. So the next pie charts are concentrating on the expenditure breakdown of the town, and where, you know, you're spending the most money in different categories. And so there's five major categories, beach nourishment is actually not included in this, this is just your general fund. General government, public safety, transportation, environmental, and debt service and capital outlay. So the largest chunk of your expenditures relates to public safety. The second is general government, all about transportation and debt service. And looking at 2017, the graph, pie chart, whoops, very similar, compared to 2017. 2018, 2017 are very similar in where the money's being spent, the percentages, not one category is much different than the other category, consistency with the town, and how they're spending their money each year. So the next, the last few graphs are going to talk about the water sewer fund. The first one's looking at your revenues and expenses for the water sewer fund. 2018 and 2017, you should have profit in the fund. Your revenues were slightly up for 2018, your expenses were slightly up, but both years, you did show a profit in the water sewer fund. How to appreciate resources, and once again, this is a cash reserve calculation. It did go down slightly, the graph kind of shows it going down more, and it really actually did. It was 1,064 days at the end of 2018 compared to 1,092 days at the end of 2017. So cash reserves for water sewer funds, very healthy too. So overall, each fund has very healthy cash reserve in place at the end of June 30th, 2018. Some of the things I wonder if the Audit Committee, some people think accounting just stays the same, but there's some changes that will be coming forward. There's some major changes in the last few years. 2018, 19 is going to be relatively quiet when it relates to government accounting standards. Coming up in the future, a couple of things that are going to possibly affect the financial reporting for the town. So there's a new lease standard coming out in the next three or four years. It's going to require that all leases be capitalized, or long-term leases be capitalized by the town. All short-term leases, less than a year, do not be capitalized. So basically, you're not going to be showing any long-term leases as debt. This will be coming out in the next three or four years, they haven't given an exact date yet. It's coming out for for-profit and not-for-profit entities in the next year or two. Government's still deciding when they're going to actually introduce this standard into place. The other thing is, there's going to be a nice report overhaul coming in place in the next five or six years. GASB 34, which is the current reporting standard, was, came out in 2001, so it's been a good 17, 18 years since they've had overhaul of reporting processes for governments. They're starting to initiate, initiate talks about, you know, how they're going, what they're going to do with that. This could take anywhere from five to six years, and maybe longer than that, but just something to look out for the future. One of the things that's having a major effect on how CKA firms audit governments is Yellow Book, that's the standard we use. There is a new Yellow Book standard that became effective July 1st, 2019, that will affect government audits for June 30th, 2020. Basically, is, one of the key points is, the CKA firm's going to have to look at its independence in regards to the preparation of the financial statements. It's going to have to reassess the skills and knowledge of town personnel to determine if they can prepare the financial statements on their. if they can prepare the financial statements on their own. And if it's, you know, determined that they're not, the firm's going to have to look at whether it's independent or not in regards to the audit. Currently, the audit firm prepares the financial statements for the town. With that, I would be glad to take any questions we have, the audit numbers, anything like that.
Yeah, I have a question on a slide about status. One, it has to do with the third bullet. Where you said, "The audit's been submitted, one change is requested, waiting on approval to be submitted." What was the one change? And is it, was it reflected in the document that we had in front of us today at the audit committee meeting? So that's, one question to you is what is, what was the change? And the other to the chair of the audit committee is, was it reflected in the, in the document that, that we had in hand at the audit committee meeting?
So the change had to do with the budget versus the actual report. The original audit submitted to the LGC had some over expenditures and a few line items, and we took a little look at that and determined some of them were not in the B part fund, were not over expenditures. However, one of the line items in the general funds is still remaining an over expenditure in the budget.
Okay, and so the final version was the version in front of us today?
That's what we looked at today, right?
I'm not aware of what version.
I believe maybe in the draft, so I'm not sure what version you all had.
I've, I've only received the one from you, so that's the one I've been providing to the board. I haven't received an updated one. So it was the one that I originally gave to the board last month.
Now that goes to approving something that we have not seen. Because your, your, your board, your, your committee approved the audit, or we're going to recommend that we approve it, but we don't have the final version.
Can you describe the changes that you made?
So there was a one line item in the B part fund that was showing an over expenditure, just a grouping classification. We corrected that, so there's no over expenditures in the B part fund. How the general fund remains as an over expenditure, the debt to the service. So there was no change there. It was one slight change, but overall, still an over expenditure.
I think the audit committee was okay that we've heard minor changes remain.
You had a couple of things you said at the earlier meeting when we were not allowed to ask questions or speak. So I just, I just had a couple of questions. And one of them was your discussion around, because of the material weakness, that you would determine that going into next year, we would be a higher risk audit because of what you experienced this year. So I understand that there was rework and things like this, but we've had this level of rework happen before with other audit firms, smaller audit firms, as I understand, previous to my being on the board. Why did it, why did it manifest so slowly in your firm? I mean, I actually, in February, at the end of February, was coming back from North Carolina League of Municipalities Dinner with the town manager, and you called him, and you were assuring him at the end of February that everything should be fine and handled within 10 days, and everything had been provided. So why was it it took so long to manifest that all of these things were, were happening? How quickly were you getting information from the county? How quickly were you guys going through it and coming back?
Yeah, so during the audit process, one of the things I talked about in the beginning was, you know, risk assessment. And how that changes, that, you know, we can assess the risk at the beginning of it, and that can change. And during the audit process, that changed. We had some ones that maybe were moderate or low, they got changed to high risk. And so that caused us to have to do additional detailed testing. And the more we started doing that, it brought on another problem, which would be more detailed testing, and, you know, kind of just domino effect, to make sure we had sufficient evidence to run your opinion of the financial statements. And so, you know, as we kept on digging, it just led to more issues to make sure that we were comfortable with the balances in place.
Do you have a rough idea about how long it generally took when you asked staff for more information? And then roughly, how long it took your firm to go through the information and come up with the, the next set of queries?
I'd have to ask my staff how long, how quickly the response time was. You know, I feel like the town responded adequately when we asked for stuff. There were some delays on a few items. I think, as I mentioned at our committee meeting, there was some software glitches. For example, the bank reconciliation was off materially when we received it in the initial audit field work, and I believe we received the corrected one in February. So there were some issues that were slower in response, and some that were quicker in response.
You made, you made the point that you would determine whether or not a town can prepare its own statement, has the skills and knowledge, or have hired. How is that done? Is there a checklist that you go through that has to do with qualifications of staff, advocacy of staff? I mean, you're going to make that determination if you audit any municipality, so how do you do it?
Um, you know, it's, it's not checklist per se. We do have some audit programs. You know, it does have qualifications of staff, you know, how they prepared them in the past, you know, what's their, you know, biographies, where they've, where the positions have been, if they've worked with town, governments in the past, and how many years, items such as that. A lot of that, you know, looks at, you know, also the accounting, the accounting being done correctly, you know, are the books clean? Because, you know, the books are, you know, if you've got material adjustments, it's very doubtful that someone can prepare the financial statements and provide material adjustments.
Okay. You stated that you discussed the fact that there was significant additional work and there would be an overrun in roughly January, February with the chair of the audit committee. Did you also communicate that to the town manager, finance officer, quarterly?
Uh, no, I just talked to the audit committee chair.
Is that typical, that you would not tell town staff and the people who are in charge of the contract?
It depends on circumstances, and most towns do not have a lot, I mean, most, a lot of towns don't have a lot of committees to communicate to.
But the contract was with the town staff and the finance officer as the, the person?
Yeah, contracts with the town for commission adjustment.
Okay. I understand that just under North Carolina law, if there had been anything truly serious, you would have been pretty much required to communicate it promptly to the board commissioner. So the fact that we didn't receive anything through this audit process means there is nothing that is considered to be extremely serious, either omission or commission?
The material weakness, I consider to be, you know, there's different levels of findings. There's what we just call deficiencies, which, using your report on management letter, they're not finding. There's significant deficiencies which are finding. You had one significant deficiency, it was a repeat this year, and you had two last year. And then there's material weaknesses, which is the audit's fault. And so you had one material weakness this year, one significant deficiency.
You actually explained this afternoon to the group exactly what the material weakness was and the other deficiency. There's a lot of people here that didn't attend the meeting, well, before the prior meeting. And you plan on going over what these deficiencies are, material weakness?
Yeah, most of the audit adjustments we had, in regards...
Just so we have continuity.
Sure. Most of the adjustments we had had to do with two key items. One was the accrual process and receivables and payables. You know, we had to make some adjustments to those accounts and had to test those in detail to begin comfortable with those balances. The other one had to do with the fund balance. One of the things we do is form a roll-forward reconciliation, you know, examining prior year audited fund balance compared to the beginning fund balance for the trial balance that the town provided, and they should match, so that, you know, all the financial numbers are rolling forward correctly. And they did not match. So there were two of the major issues with the adjustments, and it caused additional work.
So can you talk a little bit more about that? Is that the 2017 prior year? Is that the $21 million of adjustments?
Um, I said, we didn't do the 2017 audit, so I can't comment on the adjustments, but those, those adjustments, once given to the town, should be made so their financials agree to the 2017 audit. And so, I mean, some of them were not made, so we had to do some adjustments to begin fund balance to make it roll forward correctly, you know, with the 2018 financial reporting.
For the start of 18?
Yes.
And then we had $2.1 million adjustments in, in the 18, correct?
Yeah, some of those included the fund balance adjustments.
What would you expect in year-end adjustments?
Um, I would not expect them to be, I expect them to be in the materiality. You know, we do a good number of governments, and in my career, there's been one, large government's, I mean, not had adjustments. Everybody else has had some adjustments, it's just, we expect some adjustments on an annual basis that happens, and, but we would expect them to be in the materiality.
And materiality means as percentage of our...
It's a calculation based on, you know, revenues and assets the town has. And we do a lot for it in overall.
You plan on going over the recommendations as you did earlier? I mean, maybe I'm missing something here, but, you know, I just, you know, you did such a, you know, I thought you did a great job in the previous meeting, just explaining everything to everybody, so.
Sure. So, and the material weakness is the one that obviously needs to be taken a look at and corrected. We've, we've seen other towns with this similar material weakness in the past. They've gotten outside help, you know, whether it's a local CPA firm, or somebody to come in and, you know, help them close the books on monthly process. They, you know, as the town, you know, develops a checklist or a process for doing such closings, you know, maybe their CPA firm starts doing it quarterly, and eventually start doing it annually until they don't need to be around anymore. You know, this can be, you know, a few-year process, depending on, you know, how quickly the town adjusts and is able to come up with these processes and checklists, so the books are, you know, partly closed on a monthly, quarterly, and annual basis.
When you talk about this, are you also talking about the accrual process that you talked about?
Yes, the payables.
Could you elaborate a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so, I mean, for example, you know, we came in, started doing the audit, there were a lot of accounts payable, receivable balances that were the exact same thing last year. Which, you know, obviously, payables, receivables, those can change on a daily, monthly, you know, annual basis. So, you know, when we saw that, you know, we knew additional work had to be done, because they shouldn't be the same. Now, we had to get comfortable enough to where, you know, we felt that they were reasonably stated, or make adjustments to them. But those should be looked at and, you know, adjusted, depending on what balance it is. You know, some of those are quarterly, some of those are monthly, some of those are annual basis. But they should definitely be all adjusted before the auditor comes in to start auditing those.
Would, would you agree that last year, the 2017 audit had $21 million in adjustments? You had $2.1 million. The town has already agreed, identified, and hired a professional to come in and work with the staff, and to put the books together the way they should be put together, so that in the next time you visit them, do you expect they would not have that kind of finding again?
I would hope not, if they're getting outside help and start the process and recognize what the issue is and correct it.
Think we'll eliminate that?
I would have to say yes.
So that would really address the significant deficiency as well, right? That's what we're seeing. Someone who's familiar with governmental accounting principles that can review its financial statements each year, so.
Yeah, I mean, the significant deficiency, and there's a repeat finding from 2017. I think, you know, someone coming in and insists in, you know, helping staff, you know, get the checklist, get the processes in place, you know, whether it's monthly, quarterly, annual processes in place, to make sure that the, you know, financials are materially correct, and what we know, the auditor gets them, that should help address some of the significant deficiencies. You know, also, the LGC does offer classes, and, you know, and there's a few community colleges out there that are starting to help all my classes assist the smaller towns with education and these processes.
Which, as I recall, our town management has sent some of our finance staff to cap for training? And they have completed it?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
I have a question from, there was a lot of discussion today on the delay in actually finishing and sending the audit to the LGC. I have, there is a contract provision that's sent out by LGC that says, "Time is of the essence." We know it's important. And that the audit should be submitted within four months after the end of the fiscal year, and that if it's not going to be done, a written explanation should be sent to LGC. At the point when you realized we weren't going to be able to meet that contract, did you contact LGC? You know, we've been put on the list.
Yes.
And I think we could have been, that could have been avoided if we had asked for an extension or notified them that we were not prepared to do it on time, for whatever reason.
Yeah, a part of that amended contract is to give a date for which we plan on submitting the audit. At the time, I was not comfortable giving that date, so we did not file an amended contract, until I became comfortable in when we could submit, you know, or have, you know, reasonable timeframe for when we could submit the audit to LGC.
So when you knew we couldn't, even though it says "time is of the essence," we didn't notify them that we weren't going to be able to do it within the required timeframe?
I did not send the contract. I didn't notify them. As you know, Hurricane Florence did delay a lot of government audits. We had three that were delayed, including the town of Old Beach. I did notify them, because they actually sent an email out asking, and I shared them this in, you're in charge of the LGC, asking if we expected delays for governmental funds. I did notify them at that point that town of Old Beach would be on my list.
Did you, did you get a response from them, acknowledging that they were giving some latitude?
I don't think she responded. I'll double check when I...
Also today, and earlier, you mentioned that you spoke to the chair of the audit committee. Other than the town manager or town employees, did you speak to anybody else concerning the audit? Did you get any information or speak to anybody about any particularness of the audit?
You may have a set of town employees, I'm covered, John Fletcher and my staff, and what, and the LGC about the, the value of the...
Nobody from your committee other than John? And how many times did you contact John? Or did John contact you each other?
Hey, John contacted me a couple times, just to update on the audit proceedings.
Two times?
Three times. Two, possibly three. I wasn't keeping track of it.
And mine were primarily to find out what's going on, when, when are we going to meet? Will the audit be completed? When the, when the delay will be completed? When, when did you actually give the town manager an amended contract with a price increase?
I'd have to check, I don't have that table.
My mic's not working.
Just a follow-up question to you. After you spoke to, to the auditor, I don't recall anybody giving us anything, which is one of the things that we talk about the audit committee doing, right? Being, can do with information. Am I wrong, or did I miss that?
No. Other than the questions that I ask to the finance director at each of our meetings for updates.
Did you at any point in time indicate to the chair of the audit committee that the reason this was going to be more costly is because the books were being kept, were not being kept according to the law?
I'm going to phrase it that way. I said, "We had additional work because of the receivable issues, fund downs, you know..." I said, we had additional work because there were procedural issues, fund downs, you know.
Jerry, do you have anything?
Okay, I had to prepare a couple of, a couple of notes here, as I normally do. And, uh, you know, the responsibility of an audit is, uh, to review the various activities in the town and report their findings. I sound like a dog, but I don't know why my voice is kind of strange tonight, but it is. They've also provided us with recommendations to correct deficiencies. And I'm going to express in words what I feel, what I thought and what I wrote. I remember on my first VOC meeting as a new commissioner, the commissioners were having a problem in trying to obtain the 2017 annual financial audit results, which was made available at the January 2018 meeting. The audit results were available months prior to that and in addition to the results. And the reason why I'm mentioning this stuff is that whether it was this afternoon's meeting or whether it's now, right? We've got to, we've got to change. We have, we have a lot of expertise up at this table here. We have tremendous expertise on the auditing committee. CPAs, they know a lot more than I know about finance. However, we gotta, we gotta find a way of best utilizing our expertise. And going through audits, continuing to go through audits, and I sat in the meeting also and Tom, I don't want to use your name, but I'm going to use it anyway, but, uh, you know, the town ordinance, as it pertains to, to the audits, the audit committee and the responsibility of the audit committee, if we're not adhering to that and we're not doing that, by God, let's change it. But we need documents in place and we need procedures in place that are going to allow us to run our jobs effectively. The other is this representation letter that goes out. In the first, in the first audit that I was involved in, I didn't know anything about it. In this particular case now, we have an audit, I've got a lot of papers in front of me here. I'm pretty good at audits. I've been audited by every regulatory agency that there is and have the open responsibility of writing and participating in, in stating exactly what we were going to do and when we were going to do it and who was doing it and such. We continue to go through audits. We continue to hear the same types of things. We need to resolve these issues collectively. We need a collaborative team environment. We have the expertise to do it. We have procedures in place that will allow us to do that. And I'm speaking from my heart right now. Let's do it. Let's get the job done. I don't want to sit here a year from now if I get elected again. I don't want to sit here and talk about the same things over and over again. Or if we're doing it, I want to have a program in place that's going to allow us to be able to correct the deficiencies. We need to get this stuff on the surface. We need to talk about it and we need to get it out. I don't even know on the 2018 audit, I don't know whether or not we filled out this document with the corrective actions or not. Have we? Have it? Has it been submitted to anybody? I don't know. So I'm asking the question. Have it?
The complaint has to be completed before you can submit.
Pardon me?
The corrective actions has to be completed by the town before you can submit to LGC.
Okay, so was it done?
Yes.
Oh, was it done? Oh, okay. I don't know that. Did anybody else know?
Same way.
In the audit? Yeah, okay. But my point is, there's no collabora, uh, committee's no collaboration. I get a lot of paperwork and that, but I think we can do a whole lot better job of communicating with one another. Thank you.
Peter, you got anything?
I'll just quickly respond to Joe. And, and I think we've, we've kind of, at this point, are making a big turning point, actually. They've hired, hired some help to, to, uh, do the reports. I understand they're very technical, um, so that, that's a, that's a big turning point. He's given the education that significant deficiency and, and to address both of those issues. So I think we're, we're, we're at a turning point and, and the meeting today was, um, I think, uh, a good meeting because you looked at what the audit committee is directed to do and you started doing some of those and you've got a plan to, uh, address what needs to be done as far as you like. But I think, I think we're finally at a, at a turning point in addressing the issues.
I have one last thing. I just, when you and I talked and you told me you had severe overrun, I recommended that you, when you told me how much it was that you worked with the town manager, the finance director, to, to decide how much of that might be covered in the revised contract. I don't remember the date, but long after I was called by the town manager saying he had received the information from you and we had a long discussion about whether or not that would be appropriate, I shared with him that as an auditor, given what had happened, I would be, I would be inclined to say, yes, that should be, some of that should be reimbursed. And then I didn't hear anything after it until, I think, the last meeting, the last meeting we had, we got, uh, word that he had gotten a pre, uh, amended contract with a $10,000 increase in it and we discussed that at the meeting. And now we see it coming forth now to, to the audit committee. I don't have to do much, just...
Anybody got anything else?
I, I have a couple of questions, if I may. I was in the meeting briefly today and somewhat confused. I heard you mention, I think that you said that the hours that were spent on our audit would be equivalent of $44,000?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. And John, I think, in recalling conversations in earlier meetings, the $10,000, so where does that leave us? I mean, are you asking for $44,000 collectively or are you asking for $24,000 or...
Yes, and the original contract was just below $15,000, so we were asking for $10,000 in addition to that, so approximately about $20,000.
So we're asking $10,000 of the $30,000 overspent. He's asking for a third of his overrun.
I understand that. But did we have a contract for...
We had one for $15,000, he's asking $25,000 for, in the amended. Adding $10,000 for the 30, as a third of the $30,000 that we spent in excessive time.
In his defense, the auditor's defense, what did the town do to encourage him to do all this extra work? Did we give him any kind of promise of payment or did he do that out of good faith or... In my business world, for example, I'm building a house for somebody, I wouldn't add another room on unless I thought I was going to get paid for it. Did we give him any kind of indication that, that we wanted all the extra work that he did or, or is he just that good of a guy? I mean...
Well, I mean, the, the work was required. If, if we had not done the extra work to be comfortable with the balances, we would have to give a different audit opinion and, and the town would definitely be here at home from LGC if we didn't give them a, a audit. And from the work we had done, we could not have given a clean opinion on the financials. And we had to do additional, uh, work, or, as I said, do it, have a different audit opinion or we would drop the audit. Um, and so, you know, that's, it wasn't, the extra audit work's not dictated by the town, it's dictated by the audit committee's decision.
This conversation that you and I are having, to my knowledge, the first time I've ever spoken to you, because I have no experience. I'm just trying to understand.
Sure.
How we got the, this number and, and following the thought, the problems. Have we got any money missing? Did somebody take a bag of money and run or, I mean, so we've got some things, numbers put in the wrong place and we don't have a picture-perfect audit on paper. But in the real world, a little bit of people like me, have we lost any money? Are we going to the jailhouse for something we've done? I mean, so we get our numbers, reach out, we're putting it proper little spaces, but we have our money? Is that where we are?
As far as I know.
And have any villains that we need to lock up for anything that they've done? It's just a matter of homework and getting our paperwork in order. Is that where we are?
I, I would say that a material weakness is very significant on, you know, significant deficiencies with them, a material weakness, that's very significant.
Now, I'd ask Mr. Hewitt, you've been here how many years? 12? 10?
12.
12. Have we ever been this far down the trouble lane with any of our government agencies?
We've never received an advisory opinion from the local government commission or a, a, a letter from the LGC. We've never been put on the watch list, if you will.
Anybody have anything else? We thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the audit committee brought forth a recommendation to the board, uh, relatively 2017 and 2018 audit. The audit committee recommended that the board approve the audit as it's been amended so it can, we'll have to follow on. With, with the contract signed, it will be submitted to the LGC for approval. So I move that the audit, uh, the board commissioners approve the 2017, 2018 audit in concurrence to the audit committee's recommendation.
A second.
I would like to see the full and final report, not a, we had to change this, we had to change that. If it's a couple pages, it's a couple pages, but I do believe that we should be approving what the document is, not it's a draft and we understand what the changes had to be. This is going to the LGC. We should have in front of us that document.
You never saw it last year.
I don't care what happened last year. I am operating this year.
Anybody else?
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion, I guess. There's more discussion. Are you ready for the questions?
Let me just ask David a question. So the documents have been submitted to LGC. LGC has asked for a modification to one particular item. The final document will reflect that one change and otherwise be the same as what we have in office session now?
That's correct.
And you've approved that, is my correct, David?
I'm sorry.
You approved the audit, right?
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no.
No.
Madam Parker, as I understand it, we have four to one vote. Where goes the next?
The second recommendation the audit committee made was that, in fact, uh, the amended contract, including the $10,000 additional payment, would be approved by the board. So I move the board approve the amended contract.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
This was not done appropriately. There was no notification to the town about what was happening. There was no discussion. There was just suddenly a bill presented. If you believe in how you do business and how you do process, I don't deny that extra work was done, but they did not follow the rules and the process. And I, for one, do not reward people for not communicating and following process.
Judge, do you mind?
Did they communicate the extra time to anybody?
Apparently the chair of the audit committee.
And they submitted a request to David Cardwell back, asking for additional $10,000. Can we discuss that on the phone?
David, how long ago was that?
It was when we got the, uh, the draft along with an amended contract. The work had already been done, the extra work had already been done.
In April, after the work was done.
To me, to me, that's, that's the point, that whether the work was necessary or, or not, not arguing whether it was or it wasn't, we should have been notified that it was necessary and we should have been told that there was going to be an increased defense. And I think that's the way, I mean, we sit here, most of the people up here are pretty conservative when it comes to spending the town's money. I don't, I don't think anybody's going to argue with that premise that we should have been told and we should have spent it. So the question is, you know, we feel obligated to reimburse him the $10,000 that he asked for. I'm not in favor of rewarding people, you know, the old saying about it's better to, you know, ask forgiveness than to have permission, but under the circumstances, I, I think it in lieu to our benefit as, as a town. And so, uh, I would be in favor of paying the $10,000.
Yeah, yeah, and again, I gotta, I have to support that because there was, there was communication. Whether we like the communication or not in the process, we need to correct that. That's what needs to be corrected. The individuals, that company did perform the activity. They mentioned the hours, the additional hours involved in it today to us as well. And I'm of the opinion that we are responsible for it.
Mr. Chairman, did the audit committee members approve?
They did. These are recommendations that have been approved.
Anyone else? Re-advocate? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no.
No.
Four to one, Madam Parker. Mr. Fattig, you still have a floor.
Uh, the last, uh, decision that the audit committee made was to, toward the recommendation of the 2018, 2019 auditor and they announced we voted that, uh, we should retain the same audit firm as last year going forward. So I move that the board authorize or approve Reeves as the auditor for this next, for the 2018, 2019 audit.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there discussion, anyone?
Just, um, I'm, I've pointed out to the town attorney that we don't have a fee proposal or a contract in front of us. Um, we have, we have the old contract. We've amended that contract, but we don't have a fee schedule contract in front of you to act on. There was discussion at the audit committee meeting today as far as what it would take, but I was unable to ascertain what that fee schedule or the contract. I'm assuming that the contract is going to be the same standard LGC one, but you do not have that document in front of you to take action on.
Will the motion maker, the likes of a call the motion since you don't have the authority to, to take this action?
Is that true that, uh...
There's no contract in the package and likewise, uh, it was, I could not tell from item nine, I didn't have to ask for a contract because it wasn't clear from the description what is, what would be discussed. So, I mean, certainly we want...
So we're going to request a contract from Reeves?
Can you have a discussion?
Yes. I, I actually went back into last year's notes from the discussion when we had three options in front of us. Today at the meeting, I don't remember who said it, but they indicated that, no, we didn't get a price quote until we picked someone. That is not true. Last year, we had three proposals in front of us from three different firms and we had prices, prices for all three of them. I would actually like to see us have three different firms again. They will see what is happening this year. They want to decide that we're a higher risk and their, their cost will be higher or they go in and they give the kind of standard numbers of last year, but I would like to see more than one quote.
In the past, I thought that we solicited bids.
Wow.
Well, in the past, we, we had our last audit for five years. We, we didn't because you typically want, I listened to a long discussion about this and it was a four to zero vote on, on the, from the audit committee about retaining this auditor. And they had a long discussion about typically you have an audit at least two years because there's a big learning curve which we, which we discovered. Um, and there's a, and a relationship built between the auditor and the, and the staff. So there, there was a long discussion and, and it was a four to zero vote to retain the, the current audit.
And, and while I listened to that and I acknowledged that it was a good discussion... And while I listened to that and I acknowledged that it was a good discussion, we have now in front of us a firm that has said we are going to be a sort of a different category in their mind. We are going to be a higher risk audit, which was not what they priced us out at last year. So you're going to take one person's number, and so when you're, to me, falling into potentially a different category, you again go out and seek multiple, multiple offers to see whether or not what you are being told is the price is a reasonable number when there's other firms to compare it with.
Additionally, I, we were all, we all know the conversation, and I thought that a good deal of the conversation about retaining this firm is that we're behind April and we're on this watch list, and in order to get off this watch list, we would have to be able to have our audit completed by the end of this year, and in order to do that, we couldn't possibly do that with another firm. That doesn't want me to retain this firm. They've put us in a bad position. We're in a position that we've never been in before as a town, and so for reason other than what happened about comparing costs, I just look at, they didn't send the letter. He admits that they didn't send the letter, which could have extended us. The way I understand it, it's like filing the income tax. If you can't get it in by April 15th, you send a letter to IRS, your accountant sends a letter to IRS, it says, "I'll get it to you, but don't penalize my guy because we're working on it." They didn't do that, and I don't see where, whatever they've done, gives me the confidence that I want them to do it again. So I, you know, whether we sent out the bids
I heard he said he did send a letter because he encouraged it.
That was the only letter. He did not send, he did not follow it up, he did not follow it up with a letter that we weren't going to make the fee acknowledged. There was, there was time given by the LGC to everybody, that yes, we understand there was an extension. When it was clear we were going to be beyond that extension, that firm did not send a follow-up. And that is, and I will tell you from my experience with government, when you know you're not going to make a deadline on something that's required, you bloody well, every month that you're going to slip, you send them another letter and say, "We haven't forgotten, we've encountered." You keep doing it. It becomes a matter of being on record that we haven't stopped working. It's not that big a deal.
And I would just also say that we don't have the benefit of the give and take that was held during the Audit Committee today, but one of the members of the Audit Committee was able to rebut some of the timeframe that made it seem like it might have been the town's fault because they were late in responding to the request, where it was initially posed that it took two months to get a response, and the emails that the Audit Committee member had showed there was two weeks. This doesn't, this doesn't give me.
Well, he showed it was two weeks from the first draft. What came, what went to the auditor did not comply and had to be redone. That lady that was doing it was on vacation. She was late. It was a two-month delay from the time we got the draft to the time the MDNA was approved, and the next day, the audit was sent in. That's two months.
Okay, I'll say this. What do you, can you, do you have a better handle on the timeframe?
I'll have the notes with me. There was an April date that a template was sent in. There was a template was sent by Jay to David in April, and then there was another email in early May that said, "Here's a draft," and then I think two weeks after that, Ms. Rook sent in her first draft, and then the end of May, the final version was sent in. So you probably call it 30 days. I wouldn't call it two months. Wouldn't call it two weeks. So it's probably closer to 30 days or three.
Okay. So, still, the timeframe that we were initially led to believe was actually half of the timeframe. So I'm just saying, I take it all, I'll tell you, right now, this is a good time to discuss this. I'm the Commissioner. I can't speak at those meetings. I won't speak, but there's not one good reason why there's not public comments during the Audit Committee. It's the only advisory board that the town has that doesn't have a comment period, and I believe, I could be mistaken here, but I believe that Commissioner Butler, six months ago or so, because we had a little discussion about public comments, revised our rules and procedures so that there would be public comments at every single Advisory Board and Board of Commissioners meeting. Am I correct?
Correct.
So I don't understand. I wrote you a letter asking to have a comment period. You declined that, and today you specifically started the meeting by saying that, and when somebody asked if they could speak, they were told they couldn't. So it would make things a lot clearer. It would give people who pay out, pay their taxes and are going to be affected by all of these decisions we make, an opportunity to voice their opinion. We want more people to show up. Why would they show up if they have to sit there like the members of the peanut gallery? I mean, we should, they should be able to speak at every single meeting, and the Audit Committee should not be any different. I combined the two things, but I think you understand what I'm trying to say.
The only other thing that I want to bring into it is that, you know, I've been involved in auditing a long time. Not financial auditing, but DEA, FDA, you name it. I've been there working with them. And yes, it brought a frown on my face many days too when they knocked on the door paying on the year. But one thing I was always concerned about in changing an auditor, you know, I don't know LGC, but if you change an auditor after the first audit, are they going to view it as, well, what's the matter? You didn't like that audit? So you went out looking for another auditor? I don't know. I don't know. But that thought went into my head. We put ourselves a little at risk here too because if we're going to do this and look for additional auditors, we know that the 2019 audit, unless there's a miracle way that we could accelerate the timeframe to do all this and find, and find, you know, go off of the bid process and everything else, we're putting a lot on David's shoulders here now, burning him down with that too as well, right? That more than likely, we're going to be receiving a material weakness next year just because of the timing, and we have to, we have to accept that. Now, when you do that, you get, you get that twice in a row. You know, it's the old saying, you know, slap me once, maybe it's okay. Slap me twice, forget. But once you do it twice, then how's the LGC going to evaluate and assess this? Are they going to send people here? I don't know. You know, I'm not familiar enough with that. I'm never in the opinion to invite regulatory people into my house.
I agree with you there.
Amen.
But as I recall, one of the things, as we went through the whole process, nothing can happen before mid-August because new forms come out, and that is about when we should have our books closed properly, and then the field work would happen in early September, and then things would roll forward. Every couple weeks, something else is happening to get to that end of October closure where there is something submitted. So what it would really mean is we have to have a very timely search for other options and that we can then weigh more than one contract offer and make a decision. So that means in August, we would have to have things in front of us, and I'm asking the town manager from his experience and the town attorney, is that impossible to do?
No.
You can publish an RFP for whatever period of time you want. You give them seven days.
David, can I just confirm? In '16 and, well, '16, '17, we continued the auditor, Thompson Audit. We just, at the Audit Committee meeting, we said we're going to keep the same auditor. We didn't go out for bids or anything. Did you have a contract at the time?
I just asked the clerk how many years that we'd actually had that same auditor, and I believe that it was three years.
We're on.
It was that, it was that period of time.
I'm pretty sure it was five because we were, three isn't the typical, and we went, we were well over the typical. That's why we basically said this, but anyway.
Well, but the question is, we extended it, but you couldn't have had a contract at that time because we hadn't even talked about it yet.
I don't recall. You know, the clerk would have to verify that.
So are you familiar with, before you continue with the audit and you don't have a next year's price yet?
The question is, what's the price? I mean, at some point, the Board will have to approve the price and the contract. That is a Board responsibility. It'll have to be pre-audited by the fiscal or by the financial officer. So you could vote tonight to continue with the auditor, but you're writing a blank check because you don't know what amount the auditor is going to charge, so that's going to have to come back to the Board. If you don't like the price and you don't have an RFP, then you pick the can down the road. I mean, that's just, that's not the sense, but.
I like having a contract in place that I can see, read, touch, feel, and understand.
I'd like to have more than one option on the table in August for us to make an informed choice. Because again, it could be we get something bad, and you don't want to do that. We need to have, we need to have multiples in front of us at the August meeting.
Well, we did, today did discuss the price, so we do have a, you know, a preliminary price of $25,000.
He said it was a floor. He said, "Well, start, we'll start at that," but he wasn't guaranteed that that was the number. What I would suggest is, it's important we do it. I would suggest to have a surety product and hold a special meeting, just to choose if we could do it in two weeks and we could solve everybody's concerns, right? We could get a number from this firm, and we could have another firm or two put in a bid, and we could look at it, and we could just follow it.
So what are you suggesting that?
I'm suggesting we table it tonight, that we send out an RFP, and then we get the responses we scheduled, special meeting, just for the one purpose and do it. We can do that, I mean, if people are available. I don't want to screw up people's vacations.
Should I table this motion then? Table the motion.
Table the motion until next month.
Modifying the motion.
Modifying the motion now.
Yeah, if I could ask the Board to be really clear on what the expectation is about solicitation for an external auditor, it would be much appreciated. But I'm paraphrasing here that the Board desires an RFP on a quick turnaround for external audit services, and we'll have to check with the clerk on scheduling a special meeting to entertain those proposals.
Exactly.
How do you want that? For the year ending June 30, 2019. How do you, is that?
I mean, if that's a consensus, that aligns with me if I were to.
The Chair is confused. I want to make sure Chair, something I understand that you're doing. Madam Clerk, what do you understand that we're doing?
I understand that we are going to put an RFP out as soon as possible and then call a special meeting based on the availability to review the responses once I receive them.
Okay. But the problem I'm having is I've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Mr. Chair, can I table that motion?
If I can talk, I'll tell you. I can't, it's sounding rude, but I'm just trying to get you, you can withdraw your motion with the second and first agrees, and then we can go on to a consensus as to what you just said.
I withdraw the motion.
Agreed.
Everybody understand what we've done? Madam Clerk, what you said is what we're doing.
Okay.
Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
House is in order. Let's move forward.
Item number 10. The RSM report has a number of improvements of. Of the D part?
No, D.
Yeah, the D part was Audit Committee role as advisors of the Board Commissioners, and the Audit, the Audit Committee was interested in the Board, I think, confirming that the charter that we have, the, that we have, is to be done as it says, and that it would have the right, the Audit Committee would have the right to call the, the Finance Director and look at different controls and ask for information, what's going on, that sort of thing. It might be told they can't talk about things. The internal control related.
There was a considerable discussion at the Audit Committee meeting that I believe will be more adequately expressed perhaps when the minutes issue, and this ordinance has a dozen different points, in my opinion, some of which are rather vaguely written or can be taken as, as pretty much whatever is in the eye of the beholder. I personally would prefer to wait until we see the minutes that is in detail, and that I would actually say that we should, as a Board, revisit this ordinance and make sure that it is actually expressing what we want, going back to Joe's earlier comments about if we've got something that isn't doable or is, can't be understood, we should fix it and make it tight and make it a process, and perhaps what we can do is at the next BOC, we can actually have a meaningful discussion of this and see if we can clear this up. Would people be willing to put that on next month's?
Yeah, I mean, pertaining to the audits, when, when does the field work begin? You know, they talked about, the committee talked about it this afternoon. Identify all the, all the items, and I'm, you know, I'm not in favor of a checklist as much as I am in favor of a status report to the individual items that are on this. And if, like I said, if this ordinance is not what we want, then let's make it what we want.
Yeah, and, and you're right. They did, you know, talk about process. They talked about communications. They talked about reporting. So I'm fine with that because the committee spends a lot of time discussing this, and I don't think they, they talked about any changes, but they just, they.
Why would they?
Okay.
Okay, so put it on the next agenda. Okay. Number 10. Discussion possible actions of the Audit Committee role in monitoring implementation of the RSM internal control recommendations. At the last Audit Committee meeting, it was on the agenda that we would get an update, Audit Committee would get an update on what changes have been made, what controls have been improved. The Finance Director said the Board didn't want him to do that. The Board insisted that everything come to the Board first and bypass the Audit Committee, which means we don't want the Audit Committee looking at internal control or evaluating or monitoring internal control. So.
John, I don't think you understood what David said or what was said at the last or in the, at the April meeting, at the April meeting, which was the Board wanted a complete project plan of how the Town Manager Finance Officer is going to address the various internal control weaknesses, and that was contingent partly on getting the final report. At the last meeting in June, Town Manager gave some details, but also said, "I still am waiting for the final report." We said that once he presents it to the Board of Commissioners, any questions we have, any additional information or help that we need from the Audit Committee can be clearly defined and spelled out, so something specific goes to the Audit Committee for them to then help with. It wasn't that the Audit Committee is not in on this, however, it was the Town Manager Finance Officer owes the Board of Commissioners a complete plan that then can go to the Audit Committee for their assistance. So what, what was out there, and we all agreed in April, was that the target was for the Town Manager Finance Officer to give us his plan in June, which he said I will try to do, and of course, it's contingent on having the final RSM report. Without the final RSM report, it was just a brief summation, which I will remind you last month, nobody Nobody asked any questions when he gave it. Nobody said, not as detailed as I expected or I was hoping for more information on this. So, everybody just let it go by. But my understanding was we will still get a more complete plan when the RSM report is final. Is that correct, town manager?
There will be a written report to the Board of Commissioners or, or a written assessment, written response to the findings.
And is the, and is the final, is the RSM report final?
The last, the last I saw that, the latter part of last week, it was still in traffic. But, but it had been transmitted to me and I have responded back to them. So, I am awaiting a, a piece of paper in the mail, literally. It, its arrival is imminent. And I don't, I don't say that much very often, but. It's in the mail.
So, again, this was not to cut out the Audit Committee. It was to let the Board of Commissioners get the plan, the response from David and then... And this all goes back, this all comes to my topic later where I want to discuss policy for how we may request to different committees. We need to be very precise, very clear, very tight on the asks we give to committees. It shouldn't be open-ended. It shouldn't be guessing exactly what we wanted. And this is a wonderful case that we can use is when this comes, we will have specific asks. Not just, we want the opinion or we want the help of the Audit Committee. And then what kind of report do you get back then? This, to me, is, is much too loosey-goosey that we've been doing in the past year with a number of committees on important issues.
I don't, and we'll talk about it. I don't, I digress with that, but I, I, I don't think we want to micromanage them as well. But we, we should ask for a deliverable and, and, and a, and a task. But I will also point out in this subject is, you look at number six in this Audit Committee ordinance, confirm the town's internal control systems are in place and implemented. So, it's obviously within the scope of the Audit Committee.
Yes, it is. And that was discussed a couple of months ago as well, that it is fully appropriate for the Audit Committee to evaluate or to review and give an opinion back on new internal controls that the town manager implements. So, that is absolutely part of your job. So, to me, it just makes sense to see what is going to be proposed to be implemented to respond to the RSM report before anything is started by the Audit Committee.
So, controls are already in place.
No, but.
Changes have already been made and they're not allowed to know about it. We hired an outside, we've had an outside accountant. We don't know about that.
Well, actually, David mentioned it in our meeting.
He mentioned it.
Yeah. I, then I think we all knew about it. He mentioned that he had hired someone. He even said when it was asked, you know, who is it? And he gave us who it was. So, I'm sorry. It, it was communicated.
My, you're the Audit Committee.
You are the Audit Committee. You're the chair, you're the chair of the Audit Committee. You can communicate, you could communicate, like, next, you've had two meetings since then. Also, members of the Audit Committee, I don't think they have to receive information just from you. They also come to these meetings. They also read the minutes in the meetings. Information gets out there, but you could have made that at the July fifth meeting.
We were told we didn't get it. This is the first meeting today since that, since we had to change the agenda.
I believe it was mentioned at the last VOCM that there had been a person hired.
Yes.
Yes. So, the July fifth Audit Committee meeting, as the chair of that, you could have passed that on.
But we were told we were not allowed to be, to discuss the Audit, the RSM report and the recommendations.
No, this isn't the RSM report. This was the hiring somebody to assist. I've said enough.
I'll look to show out the floor now.
Do I need to withdraw this or just signal action?
You've cut the floor to do what you say.
No action, no action. Signal action to be taken.
So, we are ready to go to number eleven. Is that right?
He got, he got it hacked.
I got eleven.
All right. It's gone for our earlier discussion. Okay, number, agenda number twelve. Mr. Year.
Yes, sir. This is the budget amendment that will pay rides and associates the ten thousand dollars for the extra work done on the twenty eighteen, June thirtieth, ending day audit. That's fund balance and a pretty great fund balance. This is the budget amendment that will pay the ten thousand dollars for the rise amendment to the contract.
I believe that we approve this budget amendment.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
As I said earlier, I don't approve doing this, but it doesn't mean that I will disapprove the ordinance because the ordinance has been done appropriately.
Governor Mike, here. Any votes?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say no. She announced that her question, well, all right, turn the page. Paul Harvey says. Number thirteen. Mr. Clemmons.
I'm sure we'll go by fast. So, it's like last week that I was up here.
So, hit it for me, please.
Yeah. Back, it was a little, pump station number three, upgrade status report. This time, I really don't have a lot of reports, but I'll give you what I do have. We basically, in the beginning, hadn't really kicked the ball off yet. But me and Tim, we've been working, we agreed, and we came up with some of the final changes that we've got a lot of people to design. We don't have a final design on paper yet, ready for bids, but go with, probably have something up by September first and put out on the streets to put out for bids and that's really about, as far as we made it so far. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And if you don't have any on three, as bad as I think to say it, I will have to double back and jump back down to four, but I'm still on three right now.
So, as far as the design and engineering, how far are you into that? If any changes need to be made, so how, what percentage are you into the designing?
I wouldn't have a good percentage on it right now. A lot of things, what we've been looking at is like ventilation, adequate cooling and stuff, building, soundproofing and things of that.
So, you mentioned soundproofing. How, how, how much of the soundproofing, engineering, design, are you doing?
I think we've had a pretty extensive study on it. He's done most of that and I'll just go off his word.
Sixty-five thousand dollars for our.
Great, thank you.
That's correct. Okay. Moving on to four. I know you'll pop a remember last month. I told you that we had questioned whether the cooling that was in that building was going to be asked. But do what me and, me and Tim both were skeptical of that in the beginning. I mean, we questioned that in the beginning. But we're assured that, that we were going to be good to go. But when you light the four, rub it round and the population increased and the temperature increased, so did the cooling in that building there. Right now, today, a good comfortable hundred is about all you can hope to do in the evening. So, I've been working with Tim the past few days and been on the phone and had numerous conversations with the, with the heat and air guy to try to come up with a solution, what it takes to cool that building. And that's one of the things. I really want to keep an eye on pump station three to make sure that, that that's taken care of. Space, if we proceed before and you were talking about a building that didn't have any windows for no means of ventilation, and that's kind of scary to think about if you're just relying on air conditioning that you didn't have somebody to emergency cool by heat out of that building. That's the scary thing. I mean, you hear people talk about mold and stuff like that. You know, I never really thought about it, but it just, it just sounds terrifying to me to have a building with no windows. That's about where I'm, where I'm at. If you've got any questions, I might get answered up and put them through.
No, no, no failures on four as a result in increased temperature?
I haven't, I haven't lost any service, but I just had a few days there where I actually had to have windows open and, and, and they had four fans and I bought loads running to, to be cool.
Well, that's good. Well, we're gonna be lucky because it's supposed to stay out.
Well, I don't know if you call that lucky or not, but I tell you, I had some conversation with the Cox's sons that feeds what they had when they first fired theirs up. And I hear people talking about pump station being hot enough that they sang the electrical conduit that were built and going to trip out of the ceiling. You know, we don't want that. I'm not after nothing that you could use for a refrigerator, cool place to hang out in the daytime. I just wanted to, you know, right now, it's crazy. It sounds, if it's ninety degrees in there, it don't feel like ninety plus taking humidity out there. I just want something other that we got something out and those pumps are running for extended periods of time. I know we're on the road. I want to be good neighbors to people surrounding me. I don't want to hear a, a pump screaming in their ear while they're on vacation. But man, that's about it. I'm glad to get through the door and, and keep everything running. We hadn't liked anything until. And I don't know if everybody was here Saturday or not, but I don't know how many inches of rain we got there in about an hour and a half, but that was impressive when I, when I come over Saturday evening to try to take care of some simple problems. You just thought they had hurricane. As far as the rain, I sing on the ground.
Mr. Clemmons, one of the questions I had, remember phone calls about is the water supply for July concerns whether or not we were adequate.
I have, I have, I have heard anything from, from the canyon the past week or so, past, but when we went through restrictions, I think the numbers come down. I looked in and I looked at our consumption compared to what it was last year, that, that, and it's a little less than it has been. And I think maybe that could be a contribution, maybe some, many people's not hearing that much because the highest day I've seen now has probably been about nine hundred thousand gallons. And I've seen days around four July, it would be like a million one or a million two, which is a little less.
Well, if other people are like us, we actually had our pool over top and had to take water out. So, we weren't putting water in for a while.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. I'll call you David. Mr. Clemmons Jr. stand. Madam Clerk, number fourteen, will you take over and lead us through the election quickly?
Sure. We have on the planning and zoning board, there's three members that are vacancies. It's two alternate members and one regular member position. And on the parks and rec board, we have one member. All of those members are eligible to fill their positions again, if you guys want to vote on that or if you're valid. Okay, but before you give me these, I did want to tell you guys one more thing. Typically, when Board of Adjustment that has a regular member vacancy, a lot of times the board will move up an alternate member, and I did not put the alternate members as a name. So, I don't know if you want to consider that or just go with what you guys can give me. Just go. Okay. Okay, well, then I will count them.
For the sake of time, do you want us to go ahead or?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right. Number fifteen. Ms. Pat.
Okay. Um, as I said earlier, and this just is another example of, you know, for them to ask Audit Committee to do something, I think it's a good idea that we are clear what we do. I have thought for a while that when the Board of Commissioners has discussion and decides that we need to forward something to a committee for their work and their opinion back to us, that we need to be more concise in terms of exactly what we're asking, a sort of a timeframe that we're expecting to hear back. And are we expecting that just a simple recommendation of minutes is going to be enough? Or do we need a more formal report? Because frequently, we're actually asking for decisions that should be a clear record because a couple of years from now, it could come back. And if it's not been thoroughly reported, what was done and how the decision arrived at, you can lose a lot of time trying to remember and you might get it wrong. Okay, three years ago, this was discussed by the Board of Commissioners and they said no. And here are the reasons. And then you can restart with, okay, so what has changed since then? So, I'm just saying, I think we should have a short policy that defines sort of the level of, of, of detail that you provide, you know, what kind of ask, what kind of timeframes, and how you make a decision. Do you want a formal report or a simple one-page review of the minutes?
What type of little?
Yes.
Yeah, but I, 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 I wouldn't use the word decision. I would recommendation.
Oh, okay. Recommend, yes, recommendation to, you're right. It's recommendation to the board.
Yep. I agree.
So, I guess the, the point would be how do we create this policy? How are policies generally? Does, does the Board of Commissioners propose something to the town's policy? Do we work with some of the staff?
It's what we want, right?
Well, it would be what we want, but we, we always want to make sure that it's consistent with, I mean, town staff works on communities, things like that. Who would, who would write the report, for example? Things like that. I, I would think that.
Would you be able to work with the town staff to put this together for the board?
Of course. Yeah, I can. I, I will happily take on the task that over the next couple of months, I will, will prepare the policy.
I hope.
Yeah.
Nobody wait till after. I don't have enough time.
No, you go ahead and do what you're doing. We've already stopped. Two years. Is that what y'all put or is that what the?
Well, sometimes it's what she's like, oh, she's not under the high tide line. If she's going to high tide line, we can leave it. If she's in a.
Madam Clerk, will we go ahead now?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
So, I, I guess I've accepted that I will, by the September meeting, I will have the draft policy. It will not be long, it will not be complicated, that we can discuss at a BOC. I'll work with town staff as appropriate to develop it.
Thank you, Beth.
Ms. Pat, is this you, number sixteen?
Yeah. Um, you know, I've said, I had a couple of meetings that I felt we needed a more, well, we needed some sort of a full report on the planning and zoning board's evaluation for a second water tower. And again, this is one of those cases that this is a big project that there was a one-page sort of guidance given that didn't actually say, you know, what was evaluated. They had right angle in, there were questions answered. Um, you know, what was really the recommendation? The recommendation was, how did they come to the conclusion that they came to? Um, and, and I just felt for something as important as a second water. Um, and, and I just felt for something as important as a second water tower, there should be a document that if it is not approved this time, it's going to move down the road a couple of years, it'll come up again. And so you need more complete than the one page that we got that the recommendation was that we, you know, hire someone, if we're going to look at it, hire someone who is going to also evaluate water needs. But that's not really, that's not really adequate for something this size, I believe.
Fair enough. You know, I don't know if you were there, but I was. It was a lot of effort. So the data's there. It's data, it's, yeah, it's there. So it's just a matter of compiling that and presenting it to the board. So the question is, I mean, fifteen, do you-
We can wait to create the policy until then, or, yeah, what level of detail would you expect if it's a decision on capital expenditure?
If it's a couple of million dollar capital expenditure.
I mean, we can wait until that, or if planning and zoning already knows that we have all the information we can compile, we know what kind of a report we have put together to give to the board, that's adequate as well.
Again, it's a guess.
It's a guess.
What, what level of detail that's expected of that. So I, I think-
We wait for the policy.
I'm, I'm-
Okay.
Everybody agree?
So who do you need a report?
Yes.
Yes, we still all agree we need the report.
And it's, all the data's there.
Are we done? Mr. Butler, number seventeen.
Yes, sir. All right, a number of people have brought to my attention that there's grilling that's going on, on the beach. And people grilling hot dogs. And, you know, it's, then I asked a question, you know, then, by the way, these people came into my complaint office, and I'm just teasing. But then, then I asked a question, a couple of questions about what did this individual do with the coals? Well, he dug a little hole and covered them up with sand and, ooh. You know, what about me? I got, you know, if I don't have shoes on or something like that, I'm going to step on this thing and I'm going to burn my feet up. More importantly, some child's allowed to do the same thing, burn their feet. Um, we have a number of cabanas or tents or whatever they are right now on the beach. And I'd hate to see a spark from a grill go to one of these, and all of a sudden we end up with a fire on the beach. I would hate to see a spark fly, and we all been to the beach, and we know that the wind blows really, really well here in the afternoon. And if the snow fences, which are dry wood, or the money that we spent with all our seagrass and everything goes up in flames, that would not be, not be a good idea. So I had a look at the ordinance, and the ordinance does talk about prohibiting fires. It says it shall be unlawful for any person or business to set or cause to be set any fire within the town. Then underneath that, recreational fires. A lot of folks get confused when they read that, recreational fires. When I read it the first time, I got, I think I got confused. But I think the whole intent there was that to identify allowable pieces of equipment that can be used at home, like a UL-approved device. And that's what the intent of that was, but yet a lot of people, right, are confusing it. So what I'm recommending that the, I'd like to direct, and I'll make this in a form of a motion, I'd like to direct the town staff to revise either ninety-one point one six or ninety-one point one five to address the issue and present the results of that at our next BOC meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So if the issue is fires on the beach?
The, the issue, the issue is barbecuing on the beach.
Let, let me clarify something.
Okay.
There's a lot of confusion in terminology, beach. Are you talking about the beach strand?
Beach strands.
Okay. Just make sure we're all on the same page.
Now, whether it ends up being beach strand or whether it ends up being, uh, the public areas or the municipal areas in town.
What's your, what's your ask? What's your ask?
I'm asking the town to assess and evaluate it without giving them.
But you want to address the beach strand and public areas of the town public property?
Uh, that they, yeah, that they're not permitted in public areas could be a term that we use, but I'll leave that up to the town.
To include the beach strand?
To include beach strand, yeah.
And dunes. And dunes. We actually last winter had a case where someone down West End. There was a, you could see it the following day that there was burnt, what somebody had put together a campfire and had done something in the dune area.
Okay, beach strand?
Wow. That I would consider quite a beach strand.
I have a, you want?
I, I would just say that when you look at the first one, prohibited fires, you don't have to be very specific because I grill on my deck every day, and I think most of the people do. So if you're just trying to limit, limit grilling, then you're going to make it an offense for an individual to do it in their own property. So-
Yeah, I certainly don't want to do that because-
We're not saying that. That's why we're saying beach strand, dunes, and-
I understand that, but we have a-
There's already an ordinance in place about grilling where you can grill at your own home. That, that ordinance is in place. Yeah.
We're going to talk next about revising something that we discussed three or four different times before, and I just want to make it clear that we either get more specific to what we want, or we keep, we keep looking at it, because we keep doing things that aren't what we want. And then we have to revise them. It's not, it's not the right way to go.
But, yeah, well, there is a, I mean, we can bring it back, but there, I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is, is that people are grilling on the beach, and we've got to figure out how to distinguish between grilling on the beach, a grill and grilling on the beach, and recreational fire, and how to, to handle that situation. And we'll work on, we'll figure it out. But I, I understand exactly what you're saying. Yeah.
Okay, everybody understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Am I to vote? All voters say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Ms. Pat, I believe you still have the floor, sir, on the break team.
All right, good. The, the next one has to do with parking, paragraph K of Title VII, Chapter seventy-two. And what's currently says is that it shall be a violation of this chapter to leave standing any portion of a vehicle in a lawful parking area between the hours of two AM and five AM. Any lawful parking area could be a right of way. And it's confusing for the police department, and I'm sure they'd like to see some clarification on this as well. And that, but this was discussed last August, and some, somehow it just didn't get into the, into the ordinance to maybe the way the board wanted it. Because I believe our original intent last August was to prevent parking in any of the nine municipal parking areas between two AM and five AM.
We, we had, no, that, that's specifically the way we wanted it, because we had this discussion whether it would be better to prohibit the parking for argument's sake underneath the bridge, but then what would that person do? They would go and park next to someone's home. So instead of having somebody parked in his car all night under the bridge, he'd be in your home, and he would be allowed to be in your home if you allow parking within the right of way. So we decided that wasn't what we were looking to do. And we discussed, we had, we discussed this at least three different board commissioners meetings, and we had the town attorney draft the ordinance after all our discussions. I think it says exactly what we, what we wanted it to say.
So, so you're saying that between the hours of two AM and five AM, there's no parking in the right of way throughout the town?
We didn't want parking, the, the problem is, I remember it, when, when the issue was raised, and you were the person who, who raised it, right? Was that people were complaining, that people were parking overnight. So we were trying to find a solution for people parking overnight on the island. And after all the discussions we had, and all of the variations and so forth, we decided that the easiest way, and the most effective way to accomplish that goal was just to have a window where you couldn't leave your car parked. And that window is between two and five o'clock.
So someone that's parked in a right of way from two AM to five AM can get taken?
Yes. Yes.
Well, we have people that, that need to park, that are currently parking in the right of way between two AM and five AM.
This is an example of what I was just talking about before. We, we talked about it, and then we passed the rule, and then after the rule is put in place, we feel like we have to revise it. And so I, I would just go one, one step further. If we're going to do it in the right, in, you know, as far as the right of way goes, a lot of people are parking in the right of way, we might as well let them park underneath the bridge. We might as well just rescind that whole section of the ordinance.
No, I'm not favoring that.
So, well, that, that way people who want to fish can fish. What, I mean, what are we accomplishing by not allowing people to park under the bridge if we're going to let them park? The police are never going to know if that car that's parked next to the person's home belongs to that person in the home, these are going to be parked in the right of way instead of being under the bridge. How are we going, what are we accomplishing?
Yeah. Well, at the time, I guess the previous chief said that he would be able to handle the situation.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying if we're going to make a change, then, then we should give it a little bit more thought and decide what the ramifications of that change is going to be. And like I said, the guy who's going to park underneath the bridge is going to be parked next to Mr. Smith's home instead of being under the bridge. And the fisherman can't park at all.
Yeah, well, the whole, the whole intent with the areas, we do have, we do have the municipal parking areas identified with signs that say two AM to five AM, no parking, and are red signs. Nice red signs, so you, so you can see it. And that, and our whole intent was that, what we tried to do was prevent people from coming across the bridge in the middle of the night, after they get out of the bar or wherever else, and I'm not picking on any particular class of folks or anything like that, but sending them a distinct message that this is not a party beach, and this is not what we want to see happening. We are a family beach, and we want to retain that title, family beach.
There, there is a distinction, though, between the public areas and the right of way areas. In the right of way areas, any homeowner can stop anybody from parking in the right of way by putting up those legalized barriers.
I agree.
So there is a distinction. The town is in total and complete control of those public parking areas, whereas we have given leadway to all property owners with right of ways.
I agree, but just-
There, there's a difference.
There, there's a difference, but that's really, if somebody is renting their home, they're not going to put up a fence, right? Because people are going to use that to park.
Well-
I would say, right?
And that's a very-
They're not going to do it.
That's a very valid point, because once you rent it, it's yours.
Yeah. So, and then they want to make it more attractive, right? So they're going to make as many parking spaces as they possibly can. But that doesn't mean that every weekend, they're going to need all this parking space. All I'm saying is, what you're going to do is you're going to move the problem of somebody staying overnight under the bridge and possibly have that person just hanging out in front of your house, playing his radio while you're trying to sleep. Right? Who needs it?
So, and, and again, I'm discussing this with the board, and I'm glad we're having a discussion.
Yeah.
So, do we, do we want to make a change? You know, I had an officer bring it to my attention, that they had a difficult time trying to control us.
I, I would leave it the way it is, and it's discretion of the, uh-
I'm okay with that.
Enforce it.
I, I, I'm all for it. We passed it after a lot of discussion, and I think we should, we should be a void here.
Good.
Well, I'm going to exercise my privilege as a captain. I'm okay, Tom. I would bet everything that I hoped to ever earn, that none of you have had the phone calls and the bitching that I've had over there. The last one was this weekend when my grandfather called me. I was two minutes before I had an appointment with a client waiting downstairs to see me, and he kept me on the phone for over thirty minutes with my client waiting downstairs gloving me out because his grandson had a run-in with the Holden Beach Police Department because his grandson got a seventy-five dollar ticket, according to him, during the night. Because they want enough parking at their family house. This man had his own property for approximately forty years. So then he proceeded to tell me that a friend of his, permanent resident, took his golf cart and went all in the neighborhood, several blocks away, trying to find any kind of sign that says that they couldn't park there during those hours. And he says his neighbor couldn't find any signs. So I had to listen to that for a few more minutes. So you commissioners, if we want to continue this, I'm going to share my experiences with you and give virtual phone numbers every time I get blasted over the same, because there's nothing I can say. You sit and listen and take it. It's not working, folks. I don't know what you're going to do. Like I said, I, I'm the mayor, and I'm the one that gets the run of it, but I'm going to start sharing. I can't, it's, it's tough out there during the summer. And these, these renters and guests of homeowners, guests of permanent residents are getting on my back about it. And, and I don't know what to say to them. And he's, well, I've never heard of that before. How are we supposed to know? Well, how are they supposed to know? And then you get, well, all the ordinances are not printed, and all the orders are not on signs. Well, that might be true. But when a grandfather gets on your back because his grandson gets a ticket, closed parking to their house, I mean, I, what do you say?
Was he parked in the right of way? I don't know.
Apparently so. That's what he told me.
So he got a ticket parked between two AM to five AM?
That's what he told me.
Okay.
Where am I supposed to park? There's nowhere on my island legally that my grandson can park. And I didn't know what to say. What would I, what would you, I said, sir? Where, you couldn't go on private park, private property legally, technically. And if our, all of our public parking is shut down, and our streets are shut down, as he said, I've got to take my grandson to the beach market somewhere, Walmart, and leave his car overnight and come back? That's crap I'm listening to. So I'm not going to say anymore about it, but I'm going to tell you. Look for some phone calls.
You taking this back?
I'm taking this back.
So I can assure the rest of you that when the mayor gives out your phone number?
I shared it with you all along.
Yes, thank you very much. And the same person called me right after he talked to you.
Oh, nothing.
Or it was granddaughter this time, not their grandson.
So, so I made no motion, but it was a great discussion.
Thanks for the relief. Which is none. All right. Are we ready to go to next one, Mr. Freer?
Yes, sir. So let me first define, um, discussion possible action to GRR. GRR is a general reevaluation report. So let me, I have some information. So the BOC heard from Christine Brayden of the Wilmington Office of the Army Corps of Engineers on July eighth about inclusion in a coastal storm damage project. The Corps received thirty-five million dollars for studies. The same offer was pitched to area, other area beaches. She also proposed that a project using a nineteen sixty-six engineering study be considered. Because we already completed the work to become an engineered beach, fifteen million dollars plus two million dollars of interest for central reach, funded by the town alone, along with meeting the other requirements, our situation is different from our neighboring beaches. While the project proposed would have been more attractive in the past, before we did central reach, it isn't now. If we took the money for construction, we would lose our FEMA eligibility for storm mitigation, and we're looking, as everyone should know, at about twenty-five billion dollars, up to twenty-five billion dollars for Florence and Michael. So some might argue that we should let the Corps do the study, then make a decision. However, we're trying to have a productive, respectful, honest- However, we're trying to have a productive, respectful, honest relationship and dialogue with the Corps because we count on the sand from the lock we follow inlet to nurse to east end. The right thing to do is to tell the Corps that we appreciate their effort on our behalf, but we are not interested at this time. So I make a motion to inform the Corps that we are not interested in being included in the study for the 1966 project.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I was thinking we were going to actually have a discussion and try to arrive at some sort of agreement. I didn't realize that you already had sort of a pitch of something. To me, this is about, do we rely on continuing to get FEMA over the next 25, 30, 50 years? Do we rely on the Army Corps? Can we really rely on anything over that term? If the Army Corps does this project, are they going to build us something like they've been doing levees in the Midwest where they actually anticipate sea level rise so that they're going to engineer your beach for a three to five foot increase? In which case, would they come in and give us a lot more than we already engineered our beach too? I don't know, but these are things in my head. And I would actually like to hear from both the town manager and the mayor, who've been around a long time and dealt with both of these agencies, with FEMA and with the Army Corps. And how are you feeling in terms of looking out 25 to 50 years? And, and who might be the last man standing? Because that is, to me...
So, there was some information shared along those lines, right? So I heard that within the past 23 years, only two fundings were approved for a project as discussed.
A new project.
Which, which we would be a new project, right? So that, only two. And North Topsail Beach has been waiting for a very long time to have that approved. The other, the other...
Finish, man.
So the other, the other issue in my mind is that there are requirements, and we just had heard a few, that, you know, this would not, any project would not cover either east or west of the 2,500 feet. So, and then also, a requirement would be every, I think it was a quarter mile, we'd have to have a half mile, half mile, we'd have to have a public beach access with ten, at least 10 parking spaces, which we do not have.
The parking spaces can be a quarter of a mile away from the, from the access as well. She indicated that we wouldn't have a problem and that that was the ability to construe. The other part, the first one, was we don't lose, we don't lose the ability to have FEMA unless the project is actually commenced. So, so we can't be hurt by having the study done. We can only, we can only find out what's possible and then determine whether or not we want to participate in that.
How much does the study cost?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. So, I'll answer that. There's a, there's funding that the study normally costs $3 million, shared cost between the Army Corps of Engineers and the town. And there's a possibility of having that covered by, by a funding.
It is covered.
It is covered.
That's where the $35 million comes in. It wouldn't cost a nickel.
We, we, we're in competition to get that.
Again, but if they do the study, the study won't cost us anything.
I, I do agree with you, Peter, that we don't want to go forward with something if we think it doesn't have a snowball's chance. Okay? So to me, this is weighing, is there at least a 50/50 that we could take this? Which, which does have to do with understanding from the town. You know, like how close are we in terms of meeting the walkways and the park, and the parking? And we were never going to get all the way to the end. We can't do our west end.
No, I understand, sir.
And the, the inlet hazard areas are going to be excluded. And so the question becomes, is it going to be significantly more than the central beach area? But also, will they engineer it differently? Will it be more? Okay? So, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes into this. And I did feel that there needed to be a good level of discussion to make a determination. Do we feel more confident long-term that FEMA is going to stay? Or do we feel that going to the Army Corps beach re-nourishment?
So that's a really good question. So how many times have we been reimbursed by FEMA in the last 23 years?
And...
Many, many, many times. FEMA reimbursed.
And where is FEMA going is part of it. Where is FEMA? It's, it's the, it's the whole, if you think Army Corps has trouble getting money, FEMA isn't, isn't exactly the most popular place in the world. So this is a, this is a sort of, this is an analysis that needs to happen. And all this happened in a workshop together of what do we think is the likelihood that one versus the other is going to be the stronger place to stay? Because there's a lot of talk about FEMA not doing what FEMA has traditionally done. We know that.
Well, taught versus, you know, versus she told us what means to be, to our Army Corps of Engineers projects, only two in the last 23 years. So that's, that's data.
But, but that would be they're doing the study and saying it's too expensive for us to do. See, that would be them doing the study and saying, we're sorry, but we can't, we can't see doing this because it's too expensive. Because that's been what a lot of the problem has been compared to 25 to 50 years ago. They got into these things, they have morphed into much more cost. Now they do a cost analysis and it's too big, I think they'll just say, this isn't going to work. But, but, you know, it's, it's a case, I think, of deciding, is there a preference? Is there at least a 50/50 that we might take it? In which case, it's worth going forward. But if, if we have some sort of evidence that this would just come out, that they would do a tremendous amount of work, offer us something that we would say no thanks, then I wouldn't want to put them to work if we're already prejudging things. But I don't know how it's being prejudged.
So I'm of the opinion, what I heard is, they'll do the work, they'll offer us something and you'll never see the funding. That's what, that's what I heard. The funding would, is, would probably never happen and that's the issue. And, and that project, by the way, we already did it. It's called Central Reach. And we, and we already invested that money in, in that project that they're referring to. I'm just, you know, it's...
Again, I'd like to hear from the town manager and the mayor about their thoughts. You have a lot of, you have a lot of history on all of this as well. Whatever order.
Mr. Hewitt, Fireoff first because I need to calm down a little bit.
Well, based, based on my understanding of feedback from the commissioners, I sent Colonel Clark a letter of intent that indicated that we were, wanted to be a sponsor for participation in receiving the study under the Disruptive Amendmental Appropriations for the Disaster Relief Act of 2019. Subject to being selected through, through an adjudication process. Once that, if we were selected, then there is an agreement process that the town would have to enter into before the Corps would go forward with conducting the study. To the point about whether or not FEMA's monies are guaranteed, you have to remember that, that it's not just FEMA money. It's 100%, in North Carolina, it's 100% reimbursement. 75% of that, of those funds are federal funds. The other 25% are state funds. And we have heard rumblings to the effect of questioning, how long will North Carolina be able to continue participation in that reimbursement process? The three-year study, there's no guarantee even if selected. And the Corps does a study that the project will be construed as technically feasible, economically justified, or environmentally acceptable. So those, those three things may not, may not even happen. Here's, here's my simple understanding is that this doesn't cost us anything. It may be a backup Plan B to, to the FEMA reimbursement and it might provide an additional avenue for future beach nourishment here, here at Holden Beach.
My two cents were, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for hiring Congressman McIntyre and his group to help us be aggressive in trying to get our foot back in the door in Washington and all the agencies possibly that will listen to us where we are seeking help. We lost two years there with no one fighting those battles on the hill for us. My understanding, Mr. Hewitt, correct me if I'm wrong, but we will have forthcoming a very important report from Congressman McIntyre and his group in the August meeting. Is that right?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, this, this selection process is underway now and, and it is assumed that within the next couple of weeks, that decisions will be made whether it's up or down for us to be...
And following along, those thoughts of appreciation from me personally to the board for having the foresight to do that. I know that more than two of you have come to me and agreed that the work being done by that group is a positive thing for us. The regrettable, one of the regrettable things that I want to say is that we now find ourselves scrambling trying to find a path to follow in getting financial help, partnerships, and working together with our neighbors. We have severely severed our good fortune with our Ocean Isle neighbors and we are fighting for sand more than ever with our neighbors over at Oak Island. The terminal of going, whether you were for it or against it, we had permits that we terminated in the process for which we had already paid and by actions the town took, we don't have the option of following that at a later date, even if the money was available, whatever. So that option is gone. My big concern is, I don't know what options we've got other than raising the money out of our own pockets. So I don't know where we're going to have. Corps of Engineers, days of having money that they can direct to us through political arm twisting or whatever words you want to use, those days are going to be more and more difficult, more and more unrealistic for expectations to give us positive results. I think we're probably, I don't, I don't want to be doomsday, but I think we're probably in the worst position that we've been in recent years. I've been going to these meetings for a long time and I'm, I'm not about to give up the shift, but I am realistic enough to know where we are. The monies are not out there like they used to be. We're going to have to be doing something creative, I'm told, from the state level and the county level that maybe our hopes and dreams and projections now are not as good as they once were within the last year, which makes me feel like fudge drying up on the local and the state level as well. And Mr. Hewitt, if you disagree with that, chime in because it made me feel good if I heard something more positive than what I've been hearing the last few months. So, whatever you commissioners can come up with on our beachfront. And by the way, if none of you have looked at the east end in the last, over the last two months, the Myrtle Bushes on the northeast corner of our island are being eroded and washed away. This escarpment line on the southeast corner of the island is way north of where it used to be. And this slope on our oceanfront for the first approximately five miles going from east to west, the slope is far steeper than it has been in recent months. There's a lot going on out there and those, and Holden Beach West certainly recognize that you've lost a lot of dooms down there. Your escarpment line is severely high for this time of the year. Normally we grow our beach strand during the summer months and the sandbars look good offshore, which I'm sure you've looked through our reports. And our engineer gives us encouragement on that. However, we are in hurricane season and if we don't build up over the next four, six weeks, then that's not good. Because if the waves come in and, and break over the sandbars like they're supposed to rush shoreward, we won't have anything on the beachfront to slow them down except for dooms. So there's a lot going on out there and I don't have any solutions right now that we haven't talked about. But I do appreciate the commissioners for stepping up with the Washington and the state representation that we now have employed. But we, we need to find a bright light to give me some encouragement because I'm kind of down in the dumps about our sand projects right now.
Well, I don't know. The east end, right? We just talked about it tonight. Eighty, you know, crossing, which the Army Corps of Engineers, is their number one mission is to navigate for the intercoastal waterways, right? So the crossing is going to probably always happen until, so we're going to get at least 80 to 200-plus thousand cubic yards from that this winter. So, and I think that's a repetitive, because it's a navigational issue. I think that's a repetitive project that we're going to get for the east end.
Well, the only point I would say about that, you may or may not know, that the water depth for the, for the water from the intercoastal waterway to entering the ocean, the depth that the Corps is required to maintain now is far less than it was a few years ago. The depth that was required to be maintained in the intercoastal waterway is now much shallower than it used to be. So, it sounds like, it sounds great that they're down there working, but you've got to keep in mind that the water gets shallower and shallower. And, and all of the years that we've gotten sand on the east end of the beach is great, but it's not permanent fix.
But, but neither is, neither is this, right? Because they don't, they exclude both ends of the island, so it has nothing to do with both, both ends of that.
Which comes back to my whole point. We're in worse condition theoretically and realistically in my lifetime.
Yeah, I mean, the erosion factor, as I mentioned in the last meeting, the erosion factor on the east end, you can see it, go up there in high tide. And the fact that we lost, lost the last go-around of sand to Oak Island, you know, was another condition. We could, we could get the sand in February, March timeframe on the east end of the island because the way it works, at least my understanding of the way it works, is the Corps starts in the northern areas of North Carolina first and then they work their way south. So we'd be one of the last inlets for that sand, sand replenishment. The thing that concerns me is that there's no guarantee right now that in two years down the road, we lose that sand again. We don't know. We just don't know. There's so many unknowns right now.
But that has nothing to do with the GRR.
Absolutely not.
Right. Absolutely nothing.
But I want to say one thing before I shut up on this. Talk about the East End, the East End. In 1978, when I put my office over here, built the one storage section of my office, there were two rows of houses there and a row of dunes on the ocean side of that. That's not the East End, and that's not the inlet. You can have beyond a fishing pier, there are houses two rows deep down there, and dunes on the oceanfront down there, so focus. You know, those of you that are newcomers, been here for ten, fifteen, twenty years, you should have been here then, and you'd understand it's a big picture, not just a recent picture, and it's not important until it gets to your house.
So I'm a little surprised, because of the central reach, I think it's been the best it's been for a long time.
It was great. But what I'm telling you is, over the long haul, what we lost and continues to live.
Sure, the central reach, we're replenishing it, right? We're down in one, so right, and you know, there we can. But I think the direction, and the directions we should, and we discussed this, and we should really fund it and discuss it further, is to extend our engineering beach as far as we can, east and west, to those inlet hazard areas that are not, are not within that, can't be within. So, yeah, there's no perfect, you know, there's no perfect solution, but this GRR excludes inlet hazard areas.
But to get back to the GRR, but what you're asking us to do is make a decision tonight.
What?
Make a decision tonight that we don't want to participate in something without actually knowing the benefit of joining, right? We were all at the meeting, and as far as my position on this is simple, you recall I asked if we could put the, you know, get in involved in this and then not really touch our engineered beach, get the benefit of it on the end, and they said no. But up to $3 million study, and then they'll come back, and it's not going to cost us anything if we're chosen, pay back that we have to lose participating in it, they could come back with something that we decide is beneficial. And it could be two or three, I mean, you just said it, we might not even get the decision on what the proposed program could be for two or three years down the line. I don't see why we wouldn't.
And my argument to that is it's not free, because there's a lot of effort involved in that in those three years, so it's not free. We pay a lot of people here to do, to work, so it's not free.
To do what?
To participate in that study over three years. It's not, it's all these folk, all the staff's time, so it's not free. The other point is, are they going to do it under free time? I guess that's my point, Mike.
The point is, we don't have any idea what this staff has to do, or whether the Army Corps of Engineers comes in and does everything, and just uses some of ATM's data. You don't know that, do you?
Okay, so that's a little bit scary, but I do know, that's what my other point is, we know that it eliminates FEMA, our, our, our.
Again, it only eliminates FEMA if we actually have a completed project that would supersede our central reach project.
That's the ultimate goal. That's the ultimate goal of the study.
But you're cutting it off before we ever get to that point.
I already know that data point. I know that data point right now, we're told that.
And he knows we should sit here with.
Isn't that what you said? You said?
I'm saying that there's an opportunity that we could get a project that we would decide is beneficial. You're telling me that you know before the end of the day, without ever hearing what the project proposal will be, that it can't possibly be beneficial. That's what you're telling me, because you only want to hear what the proposal is.
So I know that we accept that project for down with FEMA.
What project? You don't know the project?
Any project, and it doesn't include the inlet areas. We've been told that, we have.
We don't have any.
We do have facts that we were told the other day.
Yes. We were given the parameters of what it would entail. We have no specifics, and we don't know if at the end of the day, just for argument's sake, what if they actually came in here and said to you, us, the town, that we have a project here that's going to add 120 feet to this whole island's beach, from 250 feet or whatever heck the number is from each end, but we're going to go, we're going to go all the rest of that distance, and we're going to extend this beach 100 feet. We wouldn't mind considering that? Whether we lose FEMA or not, we wouldn't mind considering that?
And I do know, the other data point is, there's, it's a minuscule percentage of that will ever get funded, that project that's developed.
Again, this is the future argument, because if it's not funded, we haven't, we haven't lost any examples.
I think what Mike is saying, there's just unknowns here. There's a number of unknowns here, number of unknowns. And, you know, maybe we need to let a little bit more time, we could go by and try to listen, and that, we have no obligation, no financial obligation at all. And I do, you know, my first concern, as I said, was that I have a problem with not losing or not creating an issue with FEMA, because we've got to have FEMA, and we need that sand that's in that crossing. We've got to have that.
You're mixing apples and oranges there.
Yeah, I think a major problem for us is, we're talking two, three years to get any results. I fear a lot can happen in three years of the beach. And a lot can happen with federal funds, with state funds, with local funds, and right now, this won't cost us anything.
Okay.
So when that comes true, then we'll be able to see what's the current situation with the feds, with FEMA, who has the money, who doesn't have it, what state has quit, and then we could decide without anything out of our pocket, we could decide if we want to do this way or not. I cannot think we wouldn't want to, as long as FEMA's still there and strong, and as long as the Corps gets what it normally gets. I don't like a pot of money coming and then it goes out of the bids up in Atlanta, and then decide which one of us gets it, and we might not get it.
Who, which?
With the Corps.
Right.
But there's no downside now, really, unless it's maybe upsetting FEMA or the Corps that we asked them to do something, and then later we said no. But I think it's not out of our pocket, so let them do their work, and if they come back with a great project that really satisfies us, it won't be me, it'll be some other board members, they get a chance to make that decision. I prefer not to make it for them now.
And I agree, John, and, I mean, they, the Corps seems pretty pragmatic about, we realize that this study may be done, and it's something we don't want. They were clear on that, so I don't think it's a case that they're like God about, we do something for you because, of course, you're going to love it. They have realistic expectations as well, that something could come out that we say no thank you, and they're willing, they're going to be willing to pick partners that they know that they'll get turned down for someone, and we're one of them, that that's in their mind already.
That's fine, but I wanted, you know, we had to have some discussion.
I agree.
To go forward. We had no discussion, it was just happening, and that's wrong. So if everybody thinks that this is a free beach, we're going along for the ride, I think that we need to be very careful, we don't get caught up in a, you know, something happening that we can't control, and also to monitor how much effort it is involved with the town, because I think there's a lot.
But I think at that point, David can tell us, this is too much for us, we don't want to play. If David were to tell me right now, I don't want to play this game, I'd say, fine, we don't play it.
So I think maybe we'll, maybe we push to the inlet beach, you know, how we want to, how we want to manage this effort for the next three years, that they, you know, somebody, we should, we should.
I only interject, please. Y'all aren't going to manage the Corps of Engineers doing a study.
We're going to manage how we're going to work with it.
We're going to have an agreement that the board participates in as a partner. We're not going to be telling the Corps of Engineers how to do a study. It doesn't work that way.
So, so that's scary, right? So we don't get to, you know, we're along just for the ride, so we have to determine whether we, when we want to get off that ride.
That's correct.
So that's managing our participation, and we do get, and I agree with what you're saying, David, but, and that's, that's another negative to this.
We do it every year when it comes to dredging, right? We don't tell the Corps when they're going to dredge, how they're going to dredge, they tell us when they're going to dredge, they ask us if we want to participate, and they tell us how much it's going to cost us. And we either do it or we don't.
Yeah, and we didn't have to do that for central reach. We did it on our own, made our own decisions.
Pete, you're missing the point. But you're missing the point. We're still going to continue to do what we do as a town. We're not changing the way we do business. All we're doing is we're leaving ourselves open to the possible options that are presented to us. It can't hurt us. We can refuse to accept it, or we can move forward, or we can say we'd like further input. But we don't have to do anything, and we don't have to stop doing what we're doing. I don't see how this could be a problem.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, you know, we don't have to do anything.
We're not under a, not a problem.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
What is that?
It's sixty days, David. That's why I brought it up tonight, because we are.
If you're selected, then there'll be a sixty day timeframe to enter into in an agreement or.
When is the selection?
It's, it's in the next couple of weeks.
But right now, we don't have time. All right.
So we're no more than August.
Yes, I hope so.
Yeah, we're no more than August, August.
Town managers report. Well, wait a minute, Mr. Hewitt, I'm sorry, let me go ahead and announce the winners here, Parks and Rec, Olivia Gomez, Board of Adjustment, Dr. Griffin, P and Z, Vicki Myers, with alternates Peter Paulus and Woody Time.
On the MAPS Group Classification and Pay Study, they are continuing to gather and perform in salary range comparisons that our competitor, based on our competitors' data, who mostly experienced automatic pay rate changes out of one July, that will enable them to wrap up the draft around the end of this month, two weeks, and be ready to bring back to the boards in August for your review. FEMA status, Florence and Michael, the environmental queue is still held up with those projects. Needless to say, we're moving forward with scheduling a tow boat to fly the hydrograph by the end of this month, so in a couple of weeks, we will be flying the fish. The Lockwood-Fawley Inlet Crossing Project, Peter, you spoke to that. I think that the takeaway from my bullets here is that, based on cost data that we've been able to secure from the Corps, that there is significantly less dollars being spent in the inlet, especially when you look at what the Corps is contributing, less than the planning numbers that we've been, that we've been told were happening. Now, this data that I presented to you, that is not my data, that's source data from the Corps, I haven't teased out exactly what that is or compared what our contributions have been in that, just for the audience's benefit, for 2015, in the Lockwood-Fawley Inlet, there's $610,000. Sixteen is $150,000. Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen through May is about $420,000 average on expenses federal and of contributed funds. The takeaway, and this is my opinion, is that that memorandum of agreement that provides monies, that provides for monies to be given to the federal government, as with the state being the conduit there, I think that we're going to need to ask the Division of Water Resources to evaluate the feasibility of amending that MOU, just so we can ascertain exactly what we're getting, what's happening with the money, who's contributing it, in order to clarify some project reporting parameters, but that's my opinion.
Peter, are these numbers on the scale?
These are.
Twenty sixteen, you got 1.5 thousand?
That's $1,500 from the Corps.
Is that, how do they spend $1,500 or?
To crank up the car.
Three hundred.
I can't believe you.
Just to have a lunch or?
It's a pittance. But like I said, I haven't, I'm sorry.
All those were state or county or us, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
State, county, or us, wow.
Could I ask you the status of the attorney, search for attorney? We're going to do an RFP.
Yes.
The RFP is out right now, and it's due back the week prior to the next board meeting, so that it can be on the next board agenda.
The six of us.
Okay, I get it. Mirror's comments. Those of you that have never been to Sunday concerts, if for no other reason, I would encourage you to go just to watch the little kids, one to five or six years old, there's no one at the concerts that has more fun than the little kids, and just to watch them jump up and down, and their parents take pictures of them, it's just heartwarming to see the family beach really being represented there at those events, it's just a lot of fun. Overall, I thought the fourth week went way on, we had a full house, so to speak, but thanks to the police chief and his crew and staff, we, I'm not aware of any significant activities that were unusual, everybody seemed to have a good time and safe, we had a few close calls in the ocean, but overall, the number of people we had here, I thought it was excellent. I did see something that I will mention, and then I'll be quiet. In all my years of living here, seventy years, I've never seen the cars backed up almost from the pier all the way to the stoplight, people leaving the island in the middle of the night, when a little shower came up, I remember, right? But, you know, I usually think I'm backed up a mile or so beyond stoplight trying to get here, but this time, they were leaving, so, anyway, that's all I've got to say. Thank you all for being here, and Mr. Fletcher?
Yeah, thank you. Especially how many people stay till almost 10 o'clock, that's a difficult task, the board's dealing with a lot of difficult stuff, but it is time to recognize a lot of the staff for a lot of things. There's a lot of building going on on the island, there's a lot of improvements, and I've just had probably ten years, and in the ten years, I've seen amazing growth in the number of bigger houses, newer houses, upgraded houses, and that means staff is inspecting them and checking them and doing all sorts of stuff, the maintenance guys are doing their work, the police are doing their work with the traffic and everything else, so staff's working really hard, staff hasn't grown since I've been here, at least in ten years, so we've done a great job, and just know we appreciate that.
I'll echo John's comments, we say it often, maybe not often enough, but we mean it. A lot of hard work is done, and it's done in an efficient, economical way, appreciate it very much. The other thing I'd like to say is that the filing for positions on the board or for running for mayor, open until this Friday, so if anybody out there would like to participate in the funding we do here every month, feel free to get down to the community, the county offices and register before the noon on Friday.
I actually want to express my appreciation for the turnout that we had at the audit committee meeting. I would really like, like it if more people would come to some of these, you know, key committee meetings and express your opinion to us, get involved in it. A lot of these things are hard decisions for us, too, and we really could use some informed opinions, and the only reason, the only way you're really going to be able to make an informed opinion is to, to sit through some of these sessions. We didn't have participation during budget. We've got some participation during the audit. The inlet beach protection board is going to be generating draft reports for comments. You know, we really need everybody to weigh in here and, and dig through stuff and, and offer opinions to help us do what's right for the whole island.
Great, great discussion here this evening. Thanks for hanging in there, folks. We, I really appreciate it, and town staff, you just continued to amaze me. With all this wonderful heat that we have out there and everything, you guys are really doing well and stuff. Watch the heat, and also, as a veteran, I'd like to say, God bless America.
Amen. Peter?
Yeah, same, same as Joe. Good discussion tonight, thanks for hanging in there, and I know it's, so thanks again.
All right, public comments. Anyone wants to speak back anything? Mr. Allen means you can talk, yeah. Anybody want to speak anything on the agenda or not on the agenda? If you do, just raise your hand and be recognized. All right, if not.
Who's adjourned?
Executive session.
Yeah, we can go round number three. We have six, we have five, and then we have seven, and we get very good. If we have a.
We had four.
Oh, four, yeah.
That's what, ready for me? Ready?
John, maybe second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't even hear everybody left, so.
We did. Go ahead, Ray.
Okay. Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A5, to establish or instruct a staffer agent concerning the negotiation of the price or terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property in North Carolina General Statute 14331811A3 to consult with the town attorney.
Okay, we're on executive session. All right. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, say aye.
Aye.
So we're out of executive, we're back in record session, need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, say aye.